These people are all prepared for the next big emergency. Are you? Community emergency response training is free. Call the Glendale Fire Department at 818-548-6404 to find out how you can sign up for the next free CERT class.
Everyone knows that garbage belongs in a garbage can. But in 2009, a total of 1,387,521 pounds of trash and recyclables were picked up during the California Coastal Cleanup Day. For the past five years, these numbers have grown, and for the past 24 years, cigarette butts were the most littered item. Did you know that most of the trash that ends up in the ocean is a result of urban runoff? That means that whenever someone litters in Glendale, their trash ends up in a storm drain. All Glendale storm drains lead to the Los Angeles River. The LA River empties into the ocean, our local beaches. Please, help us keep Glendale and our planet beautiful. Stop littering and adopt the neighborhood you live in. Visit cleanupglendale.org to find out how you can help. And remember, don't trash Glendale.
Have you ever suspected another motorist of driving under the influence? Now you can play a role in getting these drivers off the road before they kill or injure someone. If you see a driver and suspect that they are drunk, call 911. Report the vehicle make and model, the license plate number, and exact location. Together, we can reduce the impact of drunk drivers. Your call could save a life. A message from the Office of Traffic Safety in the California Highway Patrol.
Hi, I'm Captain Vince Raffino from the Glendale Fire Department. Disasters can be easier to deal with if you're prepared. Here are a few items you should have in your emergency kit. Count on having one gallon per person per day supply of water. And remember, water bottles do expire. Make sure your emergency supply is exchanged periodically. Non-perishable food items such as peanut butter, unsalted crackers, granola bars, canned fruits and vegetables are easy to store without refrigeration. Special need items like prescription medications, pet food, and baby supplies are also important to have. A basic first aid kit with bandages, ice packs, and gloves are very useful. Don't forget to have a flashlight and radio, and be sure to include extra batteries for both. For more information, please call the Glendale Fire Department at 818-548-6404.
Medicine flushed down the drain can end up in your local creeks, bays, and the ocean. So while medicine is good for what ails you, it's important to dispose of leftover medication properly so it doesn't hurt the environment. Please bring all unused medicine to the Glendale Environmental Management Center at 780 Flowers Street. Visit www.glandelpublicworks.com or call 548-3900 for more information.
Well, I hope it warmed you up because after Thursday afternoon, I may be in your office doing that, so...
Mr. Mayor, we're ready.
Please have a seat, everyone. I call the order, the April 12, 2011 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmembers Drayman...
Here.
Friedman...
Here.
Quintero...
Here.
Weaver...
Here.
Mayor Najarian...
Here. Councilmember Quintero, would you lead us in the flag salute?
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. From the corner office to the corner store, women work hard to earn a living, only to be paid an average 23% less than men. Equal payday symbolizes this gap by marking the day when women's salaries finally catch up to what men earned in 2010. It was Susan B. Anthony, a seminal figure in the women's suffrage and equal rights movement, who accurately observed and pointed out that, quote, "It was we, the people, not we, the white male citizens, nor yet we, the male citizens, but we, the whole people, who formed this union," end quote. As we mark this day when we recognize the disparity in earnings between genders, let us pray for the work being done to ensure that all Americans, regardless of their gender, are paid what they are entitled to and have earned through their hard work. We pray that there are no shelter given under the laws of our great nation to those who try to discriminate and undermine our citizens' constitutional rights. Let us pray that our own community is vigilant and ready to defend the rights of those who are mistreated, and to do so upholding the highest principles and values of our great nation now and forever.
May we have your report, please?
The agenda for the April 12, 2011, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, April 7, 2011, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Thank you. Next item?
At 3, under Presentation and Appointments, 3A is Agenda Preview for the Meetings of April 19, 2011, as well as the Agenda Preview for April 18.
Mr. Taktalian?
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the City Council. Next Monday, April 18, 2011, is the day that the City Council will hold its reorganization meeting. During this meeting, the city clerk is going to administer the oath of office to the Glendale Community College Board of Trustees, recognize newly elected members of the Glendale Unified School District who were sworn in earlier in the day, as well as any elected members to the Glendale City Council. Moving on to the Tuesday afternoon meetings of April 19, there will be no Housing Authority or Redevelopment Agency meeting. There will be a joint City Council and Glendale Housing Authority meeting. There will be one report by the Director of Community Services and Parks regarding a proposed annual action plan for community development block grant, emergency shelter grant, and Home Investment Partnership Act programs for fiscal year 2011 and '12. And finally, moving on to the Glendale City Council meeting in the afternoon of the 19th, there's a number of items under consent. At 5B is the Director of Community Services and Parks regarding funds for the Palmer Park Improvement Project. 5C is the Director of Community Services and Parks regarding Glendale High School Tennis Court Renovation Project. 5D, Director of Public Works and General Manager, GWP, regarding purchase of backup trailer-mounted drinking water transfer pump. And at 5E is the Director of Community Services and Parks regarding contract amendment for RJM Design Group Incorporated for the Pacific Park Pool Project. And finally, under Action Items, at 8A is the Director of Public Works regarding Safe and Healthy Streets Plan. 8B, Director of Community Development regarding amendments to the 2011 Glendale Building and Safety Code related to green building standards. 8C is a fire chief regarding providing contract, fire, and EMS dispatching services to the city of Alhambra. And at 8D is the Director of Public Works regarding Central Avenue Traffic Signal Modifications and Fiber Optic Communication System Installation Project.
Thank you. Next item, please.
At 3B is a proclamation designating the Week of April 10 through the 16, 2011, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week.
Thank you. After I read this proclamation, Councilman Weaver, I ask you to present it to the public safety telecommunicators who are in the audience. Come forward, ladies and gentlemen. And here's the proclamation. Whereas across the nation in times of intense personal crisis and community-wide disasters, the first access point for those seeking all types of emergency assistance and homeland security information is the 911 center. Whereas the Glendale Police and Verdugo Fire Communications Centers that receive these calls have emerged as the first and single point of contact for persons seeking immediate emergency assistance and are expected to multitask under emergency conditions with compassion, accuracy, and professionalism throughout the year. And whereas this week, celebrated annually, honors the thousands of men and women who respond to emergency calls, dispatch emergency professionals and equipment, and render lifesaving assistance to the citizens, residents, and visitors of Glendale, now therefore, I, Ara Najarian, Mayor of Glendale, proclaim National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 10 through April 16, and congratulate the dedicated and hard-working members of the Glendale Police Department and the Verdugo Fire Dispatch Centers for their ongoing outstanding
My comments, I'll be sure. In 14 years on council, I never once have got a complaint about 911, anybody, anywhere. You do a great job, and I know, I know we do better job than many communities. That is, the quality of the people that we have. I think I've only used you once in 14 years, and...
It was a good experience.
It was a good experience for my wife, and I was very happy how fast the response was. So congratulations. I know I don't have to tell you to keep it up, because I know you will.
Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor and members of City Council, Don Wise, Executive Administrator, Verdugo Fire Communications. I'd like to say thank you this evening for taking the time to honor our 911 professionals in this particular week, because these really truly are the unsung heroes of our first responders out there in the field. And they don't get the recognition they deserve. Our folks in Verdugo handle 12 fire departments in their respective cities these days, and that covers a population of about 800,000 folks across a number of square miles, I'm losing count off the top of my head here. But some other small facts and figures, as we processed about 155,000 phone calls last year, inbound and outbound, and that translated into about 70,000 dispatched incidents throughout the area. Whether they were brush fires, or swiftwater rescue, or your trip and falls, these folks were answering the call day in and day out, and answering that call within 10 seconds 99% of the time. So we are a very committed group of professionals, and I want to say thank you for taking the time to recognize them. And I have with me tonight Christina Kazazian and Stephen Pearson from Verdugo Fire Communications.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Kim Lardy, Lieutenant, Glendale Police Department. Tonight I have with myself Greg Corrigan and Becky Garris, two of our fine dispatchers at the police department. Police department is like Verdugo Fire 24/7 operation. We handled over 200,000 calls. We also answer our calls in 911 in 99% in under 10 seconds. The state standard is 90%, we do it 99%. We always go above and beyond, and I think that's what we expect of all our personnel, and that's what we get, and that's why I'm so very proud to be working with these individuals.
Can I ask one more question? Would you say that you all and all the others in there are under a certain amount of stress or pressure all the time? I mean, you must get them, calls coming in every minute, and you can't take a break or daydream or anything. Pretty stressful, isn't it? Thought so. Well, thank you for your dedication.
Next item, please.
3C is a proclamation designating April 10 through the 16, 2011, as National Library Week.
Thank you. I'd ask Councilmember Drayman to present this after I read the proclamation. Dr. Block, please come forward. Cindy Cleary. Whereas the Glendale Public Library will celebrate National Library Week, April 10 through 16, 2011, and whereas in order to better meet the needs of the community, the library initiated the first step in the development of a comprehensive strategic plan. And whereas several strategic priorities were recognized as areas where the library plays a leading role, providing equal access to informational resources, impacting Glendale's youth, contributing to a dynamic arts and culture community, offering civic spaces for community activities, and preserving Glendale's history. And whereas the next step is to align the library's existing services with these strategic directions to ensure that our services match the community priorities expressed through this process, now therefore, I, Ara Najarian, Mayor of the city of Glendale, proclaim April 10 through the 16, 2011, as National Library Week, and invite Glendale residents to take advantage of the many resources the library has to offer, and give the library your comments for the strategic plan at www.glandelpubliclibrary... that's one word... Dr. Block, I'd like to present this to you on behalf of Mayor Najarian. Thank you very much. Please come forward and say a few words.
On behalf of the management and the staff and the friends of the library, and most importantly, the patrons of the library, I want to express my gratitude to council for issuing this proclamation. You know, the library is a very unique institution. Within its walls are books and periodicals, an array of important archival material, and now with the new era, we have a significant number of electronic media. This collection is part of the culture of the world, of who we were, of who we are, and of who we want to be. It's the mission of the library to preserve that collection and to keep it up to date with the changing times and the demands and the needs that we currently have. And finally, to make that collection available to everybody in the community who wants to take advantage of it. We know that right now, we're in turbulent economic times, and the library, along with the school system and the health system, to name just a few, are under attack from Washington and Sacramento. But let me assure you that with your interest and with your support, as indicated by this proclamation, the good folks at the library can meet those challenges, and we thank you.
Next item, please.
At 3D is a presentation designating April 2011 as annual commemoration of the Armenian Genocide Month.
Thank you. And we have invited to receive these presentations representatives of the different organizations that comprise the genocide and man's inhumanity to man commemorative committee. So will Ara Aharonian from the Armenian Rights Council, Harry Unel, Alex Kojabanyan from the Armenian Council of America, Ellen Asaturian from the Armenian National Committee, and Seda Khodjayan from the Armenian Relief Society, please come forward. I have five proclamations, and I'm going to ask all of my colleagues to share the honor in presenting them to you after I read. Is all the same, is that... They're all, okay. We have enough?
Five.
Five, okay. Whereas the city of Glendale believes that cultural diversity is achieved when our entire community acknowledges that its wholeness is based on the unique strengths of each of its community members. Today, we can no longer innocently harbor feelings of superiority and separatism in our society. And whereas the Armenian community has participated in and greatly enriched our city through contributions in business, arts, culture, education, and government, and whereas many in our community who are of Armenian descent lost a significant number of family members, belongings, and heritage in the genocide. The hurt is deep, and we look forward to a time when the tragedy will be universally acknowledged. And whereas we appreciate the efforts of the community volunteers in organizing the Week of Remembrance to commemorate and recognize April 25 as the annual commemoration event, and urge our representatives and elected officials in Washington, DC to do the same. And whereas we appreciate the efforts of the Glendale Unified School District and the Glendale Community College in educating our youth regarding the Armenian genocide. We encourage these and other learning institutions to actively participate in the annual events of commemoration and remembrance, and to increase their efforts to educate our community, not only about the Armenian genocide, but all of man's inhumanity to man. In the words of Jorge Santayana, "Those who cannot remember the past are condemned to repeat it." And now therefore, I, Ara Najarian, Mayor of the city of Glendale, proclaim the month of April as annual commemoration month, and invite all members of the community to participate Yes, I invite you all to say a few words to the city and to the council.
I would like to say thank you very much for giving me opportunity to be part of this committee, very special and important committee. As a member of Armenian Relief Society Glendale Cipan Chapter, all our members are ready voluntarily to help our beautiful city, Glendale. Thank you very much, and God bless you all.
Good evening. I wanted to first and foremost thank Mayor Najarian, the council members, the city staff, and of course, Zet Mullins for helping put together this week, which is very, very important, not just for the Armenian-American community, but I think it's a lesson to be learned for everyone that lives in Glendale and in Los Angeles and in California. For the past five years, we've partnered with the city of Glendale Week of Remembrance Committee to host an annual blood drive, and this year's blood drive will take place this coming Sunday, April 17, from 10 to 4 p.m., at the Glendale Youth Center, which is located at 211 West Chestnut, Glendale, California, 911. which is located at 211 West Chestnut, Glendale, California, 91204. I'd like to invite all the council members and the community members to come and participate and give back to the community.
Good evening. Thank you very much, council members, Mr. Mayor, for presenting this proclamation to us. We are eternally grateful. The Armenian genocide and this proclamation stating, giving us a month to remember this Armenian genocide gives us a lot of power and closure over that horrific event in our culture's history. And it gives us just one more step, you know, it's just one more stepping stone to get us to getting the United States of America to accept that the Armenian genocide was a genocide and allowing us to finally get some full closure within this great country that we have adopted as our own. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, City of Glendale residents. My name is Diana Costa. I am here as representing the Glendale Philharmonic Orchestra, and we are honored that you have given us the opportunity this year to provide you with a musical program for the Armenian genocide commemorative event. And we are promising that what we will be performing will be reflecting the seriousness of the event as well as inspiring hope to all Armenian-Americans and Armenian citizens that may be there or may be watching or listening in other ways. So thanks, thank you very much again, and we look forward to this.
Honorable Mayor Najarian, dear council members, city staff, and of course I cannot forget Audrey Sergeant Zet Mullins, with whom we worked for almost 10 years now because it was exactly 10 years ago, right in this building, right in this city council meeting, that city council initiated the Citizens Memorial Council, so that that memorial council had a resolution, and one of the resolutions was to have the month of April as Armenian genocide commemoration month. And since then, we're working together with the city staff and, of course, committee members in order to do our best to have our commemoration in the city. And throughout the years, we have had a lot of events, as you know, at different venues. And of course, one of the programs was to have men's inhumanity against men program, which was continuing till now. And of course, we had blood drive, as Ellen said a while ago, but the main thing is that this year is the 10th anniversary of the commemoration, which will be held next Monday on the 25th after the Easter Sunday at the Alex Theater. I hope to see everyone there. Thank you very much again for this proclamation. Thanks again.
Thank you for, thank you for all your hard work, and to city staff, Zet Mullins in particular. The event is on April 25th because April 24th is Easter Sunday this year. We do have a PSA that we can air regarding the event.
The City of Glendale will host its annual commemoration of the Armenian genocide on Monday, April 25th, at 6:30 p.m. at the Alex Theater. The keynote speaker will be three-time Pulitzer Prize-winning investigative journalist Steve Kirkjian. This year's event will also include performances by the Armenian Dramatic Arts Alliance and the Glendale Philharmonic. Admission is free. Complimentary tickets are available at the Alex box office. For more information, call 818-548-4844.
Thank you, and I think it'll be a very moving program this year. We hope to see you all there April 25th. Tickets are free, available at the Alex box office. The program starts at 6:30. Thank you. Next item, please.
At three E is a commemoration to the, sorry, commendation to the Glendale Masonic Lodge for their 106th anniversary.
Thank you. Will the lodge members please come forward? Thank you. We are so honored as a city to celebrate the 106th anniversary of your lodge. I was fortunate to attend one of your dinners a few years ago, I think it was the 102nd, and learned so very much about the rich history that the Masons played in the founding of the City of Glendale. Many familiar names, whose names are now adorn our schools, our streets, our civic buildings. So it's my pleasure to present you, gentlemen, with a mayor's commendation presented to the Glendale Masonic Lodge. Congratulations on the celebration of your 106th anniversary and with our sincere appreciation for the highest professional standards, dedication, and commitment to excellence your organization has provided to the residents of our community.[979.13][979.13](APPLAUSE).
Honorable Mayor, honorable council members, residents of Glendale, I have with me representatives of our lodge, our senior warden Scott Manoukian, our junior warden N'Gol Valavian, and I'm Travis Robinson, the master of Glendale Lodge for 2011. Gives us a great deal of pleasure to accept this commendation, and with warm hearts, we thank you for your acknowledging our membership in the Glendale community as we strive to make civic pride and civic support a part of our institution, as we will be doing this year at the May 3 public schools recognition, where our lodge will continue its 37th-year tradition of honoring members of Glendale Public Schools. Thank you for this.
Next item, please.
Next item is city council and staff comments.
Thank you. I would like to lead off, but at the same time defer my time to Mr. Kasaki for an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Just a quick announcement regarding the elections. Last Tuesday, April 5th, 2011, we held here in our city our municipal elections with voters casting their ballots throughout the city. The preliminary results were posted online on our website, glendalevotes.org, broadcast via GTV6, and also were up on the internet through our interactive election tracker, our collaborative project with the Rose Institute out of Claremont McKenna College. There is, as many have noticed, a narrow margin of votes currently separating the candidates for city council and the number of outstanding ballots yet to be counted. There remain 3,153 ballots to be processed, which include vote by mail and provisional ballots. The process to verify these ballots is open to the public, and interested parties may visit the election center located in the Glendale Police Department's community room at 131 Isabel Street to observe what will take place next. The counting of all remaining ballots, which will be verified for the final tally, will begin on Thursday, April 14th, 2011, at 9:00 a.m. This process will occur again at the election center as well, and results are expected to be announced the same day. And as I mentioned before, we welcome anyone from the public to stop by and observe this process. And for more information, more detailed information, people may visit www.glendalevotes.org. Thank you.
You?
Mayor, since people, I don't know, Mr. Drayman, but people ask, ask me what time and all that. Heard 9:00, and then I started hearing 2:00 o'clock, and I don't, I'm at a loss.
Councilmember Weaver, there is notices, public notices that have been posted on our website as well as on the bulletin board outside City Hall. They instruct people about the proper times for the events that will take place. At 9:00 a.m., the processing will begin. That means the opening of envelopes. Many people may want to come and observe that. At 2:00, the machine from Martin &amp; Chapman, which reads the ballots, will commence the final tally.
I just want people to get there at 9:00 o'clock, and by 9:30, they'll know you've got a process to go through. Say it on paper.
It will take from 9:00 a.m. till about 2:30. We don't anticipate longer, but you never know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Ms. Friedman.
Good evening, Glendale. I have a number of comments, so if you'll just bear with me for a few minutes. First, yesterday and today, I was wearing my MWD Metropolitan Water District hat on behalf of the City of Glendale, and one of the bigger issues that was talked about was the lifting of the water allocations, which is the rationing that Metropolitan has been doing for the last several years to cities to deal with the drought. And as you've probably noticed, it's been raining a lot this year. In fact, we've had record snowfall and record rainfall, and so it has not yet been voted on by the Board of Directors of Metropolitan, but the recommendation from the subcommittees was to lift the water allocation, which means that Glendale will be able to basically buy as much water as we want to or as we can afford. Now, we can't forget that droughts and plenty in California are cyclical, and by no means does having a lot of rain one year mean that we're going to have a lot of rain next year or the year after or the year after that. And it's pretty inevitable that we'll be back in drought at some point. So we need to, as a community, embrace conservation, remember that the drought will eventually come back, and whatever lessons we learned from this last drought and whatever changes we've made to our lifestyle, we'll need to maintain. But I do believe that it's time that Glendale looks at our water rationing ordinance and considers lifting that as the allocation for Metropolitan is being lifted. So I would like to agendize that, if my colleagues will agree. Okay? Looks like we have a yes to agendize that, and I think we should do it sooner rather than later, but again, reminding the community that just because there's water now doesn't mean that there'll be water next year or the year after or the year after that. So I also wanted to mention a few events that I attended this last week. It was a busy week, a lot of really great and successful events. The Seroptimists held their annual Bras for a Cause event, which raises awareness and money for breast cancer. It was a really well-attended event, as it always is. It's a lot of fun. Members of the community decorate bras, and then there's judges, and I was very proud to be a judge this year, who judge on all kinds of categories, most creative, most humorous, most beautiful. And I'll tell you, it's amazing what you can do decorating a bra. It's just amazing what they come up with. They had several hundred people there, raised quite a bit of money, both through their auctions and through admissions for breast cancer research, and it was, I want to congratulate all of the Seroptimists, including our own Yasmin Beers, who's not here right now, for a great event. Along the same line, the Armenian-American Women's Medical Auxiliary had their luncheon on Saturday, and again, it was a very well-attended luncheon. It raises money for services, medical services, for women in the community who are underinsured. And they had a really amazing success story. From last year's luncheon, they were able to raise enough money to offer free mammograms to a lot of members of the community who couldn't afford them. And out of the mammograms that they gave, one of the women, who was in her early 50s, discovered, she had never had a mammogram before, and she discovered that she had stage three cancer. And so, and they were able to get her Medicaid, get her into treatment with a really good oncologist, and so now she has a fighting chance, and she has a good prognosis. And if it wasn't for that program and for getting that free mammogram, she would most certainly have died of breast cancer. So they really have, you know, accomplished something, and how many groups and people can say that they've saved a life? And I think in their case, they really have. I also attended on Saturday the health fair that Glendale Healthy Kids threw. It was a wonderful event with all kinds of volunteers from all over the community, mostly in the medical fields. And at this health fair, members of the community were able to get information about general health. They were able to do testing for, for all kinds of ailments and routine medical tests that people that have insurance take for granted, but that for people who don't have insurance, who are underinsured, this was a rare opportunity for them to get these treatments for free. The Lions Club were there giving out eyeglasses, and there was a huge line for people who wanted eyeglasses or reading glasses or new glasses. So, and there was free dental care being given, information for children about nutrition and safety and medical issues and legal issues. Neighborhood Legal Services was there, giving many interested parents information about legal services for children, schools, domestic violence, resources, all sorts of really important information. So congratulations to Glendale Healthy Kids. Finally, I was able to attend, and some of you may have read about it in the paper, the dedication of a really beautiful sculpture, a piece of art that was made in honor of firefighter Bill Jensen, who was a Glendale firefighter, who was very critically burned in a fire several years ago. And he made a recovery, and it was a really miraculous recovery because he was only given, I think, a 5% chance of surviving. And he now tours the country and meets with burn victims to inspire them to, to go through the painful treatments and to get back to health. And he's, he's a true inspiration. And the memorial is really beautiful. It's, it's to all firefighters and to their bravery. Evidently, it was being filmed for the History Channel, so if you watch your local listings, if you get the History Channel, you might have a chance to see Mr. Jensen getting this, seeing this, this beautiful sculpture. And he was completely surprised. It was kept a secret from him. So when he walked in and saw this, he was, and saw a couple of hundred people there to honor him, he was really shocked. And it's my hope that we can display this sculpture proudly for the whole community to see, to honor all of our brave men and women who put their lives on the line for us in the fire department. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
I agree, Jensen is truly a hero, and the pain and operations he went through are just, just incredible, but he's made the best of it. So it would be nice to have it displayed somewhere in a, in a public setting, so maybe we can work with the staff and try to see where we can have all the citizens of Glendale see this beautiful piece. I attended the Cycle B, I think that's how you pronounce it. Basically, read about and saw it on TV. The city of L.A. closed streets from Hollywood to downtown Los Angeles and right into East Los Angeles. What an event. Oh my God, there were, the newspaper said 100,000 people. I don't know. I mean, there were certainly tens of thousands of people in the downtown area. Part of it happened to go down Spring Street, where I had an office for about 25 years. It was just so strange watching people ride bicycles, walk, roller skate. I mean, it was an event, and I think they're going to have it again, do another one in July, and I think they do it again in October. But it sure would be nice if we could get a piece of this, this Cycle B. I mean, it really, I think it worked great for the merchants in terms of restaurants, and there was just an awful lot of activity.
Thank you. Mr. Drayman. Well, I didn't have an event to, to talk about, Mr. Mayor, but it dawned on me as I was listening to Mr. Quintero, that I was taking family back to the airport on Sunday morning, and as I crossed under the overpasses, I saw the event you're speaking of, and it was amazing. I mean, really amazing. You have no idea. It was not just bicycles and skateboards, it was everything with wheels on it, including wheelchairs and scooters, and it was just phenomenal. And I agree, I think that's something that if, if this city could become a part of, and how convenient, I see Colin Bulgart sitting in the back, perhaps he has some ideas as to how Glendale could become involved in, in that program. Anyway, it looked like a lot of fun, and I would have, I was curious enough, I would have stopped and gotten out of the car if I wasn't trying to make LAX to drop off some family, but anyway. That was my event for the weekend, Tuesday night, well, we won't talk about, but, but I did want to thank Councilmember Friedman, Councilmember Mayor Najarian, for coming by on Tuesday night to our campaign gathering. Mr. Weaver, you have an excuse for not being there, as does Mr. Manoukian and, and Mr. Peroglian and Mr. Mohill and Elian. Quite an evening, interesting, they're always interesting in Glendale, aren't they, folks? Our elections. But more to say on that another time. But I did want to acknowledge my fellow candidates and also thank my colleagues for dropping by with some, well, which is also staff too, for kind comments in the last week. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Are there any comments from staff? Let's move on, the next item.
Under consent items, including minutes, the following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so. so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
All right. I'd like to pull, I'd like to pull 5B.
Okay. And I understand that there may be an abstention on the March 1st minutes. I'm Ms. Friedman.
We have now confirmed your absence that day.
Okay. I will abstain from the March 1st minutes.
And is there a motion for A, C, D, E, and F?
So move. Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
5B, please.
5B is Director of Public Works regarding Riverdale Drive, Maple Street Neighborhood Greenway Project, Spec. No. 3439. At B1's resolution adopting plans and spec and directing the city clerk to advertise for bids.
Mr. Quintero.
Well, I pulled it because I'd like to have the public become a little more aware of what we're about to do, and I do see Colin Bogart in the, Colin Bogart in the audience. But I'd just like to have the residents understand what we're doing here.
Who can best answer those questions? Chief Starbuck.
April or Colin, which would you like? Colin, okay. Colin's drafted. Colin Bogart.
Mayor Najarian, councilmembers, Councilman Quintero, city staff. I'm Colin Bogart with the LA County Bicycle Coalition. The Riverdale Maple Neighborhood Greenway, or as we're also calling it the Neighborhood Glendale Greenway, is part of the ongoing collaboration between the LA County Bike Coalition and the City of Glendale for our place grant project. The primary concept of the project is to make the corridor of Riverdale Drive and Maple Street a bike and pedestrian-friendly corridor connecting three parks, Pacific Park, Maple Park, and Carr Park, and to put in as many bicyclist and pedestrian improvements along that corridor as we possibly can. It's considered actually a part of the place grant project. They refer to it as a physical project. The idea is for it to act as a demonstration for the concepts of the Safe and Healthy Streets Plan, but also to be that corridor similar to what's referred to as a bicycle boulevard. But in this case, we're referring to it as a greenway, because we want to emphasize that it is, the improvements are intended for pedestrians as well as bicyclists. And that's, basically, it is in a nutshell. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Well, I'm just also happy to report that it's actually going to go very close to Mr. Kasakian's domicile, so that he'll be able to get on his bicycle and come to City Hall without any problem. But we'll be working on that. I'm very excited about this. I'm very happy. I think it's a great route. I think it's going to be used, like you mentioned, not just bicyclists, but people wanting to stroll. Connects the parks. It's a great east-west thoroughfare, so very good job. And I'll move the.
5B.
Item. I'll move 5B.
For a second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Quintero.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Najarian.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Weaver.
Since Mr. Quintero brought that up when we just approved here tonight to stand by, we just approved the plan specs for rehabbing Verdugo Road from Colorado to Glendale Avenue, going by two or three schools. When it hits, it's going to be extensive. Right, Mr. Rubik? It's going to be extensive, sidewalks, curbs, gutters, asphalt, street size, street tree planting. It's going to cause disruption, depending on the time of year that we start this. So this is just the approval of plan specs, not the award of contract, so it'll be coming.
Thank you. Okay, next item, please.
Next item would be oral communications. This is a three-minute announcement portion.
Thank you. I have a card from Leon Mayer.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Mayer. I'm with the Glendale Friends at the Library, and I would certainly echo Dr. Bloch's comments about our library, what it can do for the community, what it's available to do for everybody and every family who wants to take advantage of our library. Now, the Friends at the Library have an event on Thursday, April 21st, 7:00 Central Auditorium. We're going to have Arthur Bartner. Arthur Bartner, for 40 years, has been the leader of the USC marching band, and the program will concern the book called "The Man on the Ladder: Forty Years of Dr. Arthur C. Bartner and the Spirit of Troy." Of course, the spirit of Troy is the 325 enthusiastic musicians who make up the marching band. And there will be a slideshow. We understand someone's going to be bringing a couple of CDs, so you'll have a little music there. And of course, Dr. Bartner will be there to discuss his book, sign his book, and sell his book. So that'll be April 21st, Thursday. Parking is available at the structure on Maryland. Three-hour validation. Now, we have another event coming up on May 4th. That's a Wednesday, 7:00. That is a specially interesting program. The title of the program is "Radio Shangri-La: What I Learned in Bhutan, the Happiest Kingdom on Earth," by Lisa Napoli. Now, some of you might remember "The Lost Horizons" with Ronald Coleman, which was featured geographically, the area where Bhutan is, right in the middle of the Himalayas, south of China, north of India, west of Pakistan, and east of some other country there. And Lisa Napoli went there two times, extended trips, and she stayed there, and she worked with the radio station that was being done and run by high school students. So we would certainly, again, urge high school students from our various high schools and their teachers to see if you can get something organized to come to hear Lisa Napoli Wednesday, May 4th, talking about Radio Shangri-La. Now, if I have a minute or two left, I'd like to also mention that our, the Friends at the Library, we work very closely with the library on all our events, and we want to, I just happen to have with me for April 16th and 17th composer Tigran Mansurian, who will be there at the library to talk. He's a recognized musician. He was a leading Armenian musician in Russia, and then Armenia, and he is here. He was also a priest, composer, cheerleader, singer, everything you can think of, and the founder of modern Armenian classical music. So I have these flyers as I leave.
Thank you.
Wave your hand if you want some from me. Thank you very much. All our programs are free, and again, parking is validated at the exchange, at the library from the exchange. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ani Nazarian, Natalie Sarokanian.
Greetings, Mayor Najarian, city council members and staff. My name is Natalie Sarokanian, and I'm an executive member from the Clark Magnet High School Armenian Club. To my left are Tamara Talverdian from Crescent Valley High School, Zauri Hova Sapien from Hoover High School, Haikba Dalian from Hoover High School, and Ani Nazarian from Clark Magnet High School. We've come before you today to invite everyone to our 10th Annual Genocide Commemoration Assembly that will take place April 20th from 6:30 to 9:30 PM at the Glendale High School Auditorium. The evening will consist of dance performances, video presentations, poems, a band, and a lovely tribute to a genocide survivor who is still with us today.
The four high schools from our district, with the guidance of Board President Greg Koryan, have met every month to prepare our assembly and would greatly appreciate if you all could attend our event.
Once again, the commemoration is open to the public and admission is free. The evening will be held at the Glendale High School Auditorium, April 20th from 6:30 to 9:30 PM. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, if we can show the flyer that, at the request of the students, that we have, that mentions the date and the information. Thank you, GTV6. Again, Wednesday, April 20th, 2011, at Glendale High School Auditorium. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jasmine Seffian.
Hello, Mayor, city council members. I'm here today to invite you to a free community health fair that will take place this Saturday, April 16th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at 3600 North Verdugo Road. That's the new glass building about a block south from Honolulu on Verdugo. We're going to have free health screenings, free information, free food and drinks. Some of the health screenings will include cardiac risk factor assessment, vision screenings, blood pressure screenings, spine analysis, flexibility test, nutrition education, body mass index analysis, and blood sugar diabetic screenings. We're going to have experts in medicine, chiropractics, optometry, and nutrition. If you have any questions or would like more information, please give us a call at 818-249-1300. Again, that's this Saturday, April 16th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Thank you.
At the famous building just south of Honolulu.
Famous building, yes.
The medical building right there. Okay, very good. Glad to see that we're putting it to some good use. I don't have any other cards for this portion of oral communication, so it will be recessed. Next item, please.
At 8, under action items, at 8A is the Chief of Police and Director of Information Services regarding replacement of the current police communication aided dispatch CAD and records management system, RMS, under an early adopter program. 8A1 is a resolution appropriating $1,158,680 to provide funds for contractual services agreement with Tiburon Inc. At 2 is a resolution appropriating $200,000 to hire a city resources specialist for the CAD and RMS replacement project. At 3 is a resolution appropriating $80,000 to provide funds for the procurement of computer hardware from Dell Inc. At 4 is a motion authorizing city manager to execute a professional services agreement with Tiburon Inc. for the replacement of the CAD and RMS software, including licenses and implementation, and not to exceed the amount of $1,158,680, including contingency. At 5 is a motion authorizing city manager to execute an agreement or purchase order with Dell Inc. for the computer hardware in a not-to-exceed amount of $80,000.
The leader report. Okay. Before we go any further, I'm going to have a brief sidebar with city attorney. I'd just like to announce that I do have a financial interest in Dell Computer, and I see that Dell is one of the vendors. So therefore, I will be, although initial discussions indicate that it's such a large company, the contract that we're entering into may not have any effect on my investment. Out of an abundance caution, I'm going to recuse myself from this item, step into the back room, and I'm not sure who the pro temp is this.
That would be Councilmember Drayman.
Councilmember Drayman.
Right, sir. Before you leave, I'm going to recommend you buy Apple.
All right. Let me ask, before we, before we go to Mr. Fraga, do my colleagues want to report on this to begin with?
Neither.
Let me ask, Mr. Fraga, will you just give us, and Chief, if you can just give us a 60-second each rundown, just for the public, please?
Neither one. Councilman Drayman and members of the council, Ed Fraga, Information Services Director for the city. This is simply a matter of acquiring an upgrade from an existing vendor for a computer-aided dispatch and records management system that also includes J O management and MDCs or mobile data computers, the software thereof, and services to implement that under what's called an early adopter program. This has financial benefits to the city by taking the early adopter program. Slight risk in that we will be new, early people to this project, but as it's outlined in the report, we think it's well worth the, well worth the risk, and we've taken a number of mitigation measures to counteract that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fraga. Chief, anything to add? It's your, possibly your last 60 seconds with me chairing anything. Okay. All right. My colleagues, anything?
Mr. Drayman. Well, Mr. Starber informed me that at 8A2, that that money is actually going to be an hourly person that's going to work on the CAD, and so it'll be much cheaper than hiring a quote consulting firm to.
That's correct.
Do it for us.
Yes. Mr. Drayman.
Yes, Mr. Weaver.
Glad to move the motion at 8A1, 2, 3, 4, and 5.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All right. Mr. Kasakian, if you would, please.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Carroll.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Najarian, Mayor Pro Temp, Drayman.
Yes. Thank you very much. Let me see if we can get our mayor back here.
He's not watching?
He's buying Apple stock.
Thank you, Mr. Drayman, for taking over. Next item, please.
And 9 is hearings. 9A is Director of Public Works regarding grant of a franchise to Pacific Pipeline Systems LLC for the operation and maintenance of an oil pipeline, Line 63. At 9A1 is ordinance for introduction.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing and go to Chris Senso.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is a renewal franchise ordinance for introduction for a 14-inch diameter crude oil pipeline. This is Line 63. It's currently owned by Pacific Pipeline Systems LLC. It was built in 1950. Since that time, the owners of that pipeline, up to current day, have complied fully with all state, federal, regular, and local regulations. Also, they've always complied with the franchise fee payments as required by the older franchises. So this is just a renewal. And in the audience, we have Jim Jacoby and Greg Armentraut. Greg Armentraut is here from Pacific Pipeline. He can answer any technical questions you have. We also have public works staff and myself to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
I do have a question. I understand it's a 14-inch inner diameter pipe. What sort of pressure is it under?
That would be a technical question for Pacific to answer, so I would invite Greg to come up.
Could I invite Mr. Jacoby?
Mr. Galanian. Wouldn't you have that information? We'd want to go to Pacific for that.
Actually, right now, the southern, or the northerly portion of that pipeline is idle and nitrogen purged. We are operating off of another pipeline that's running through Glendale. It's our Line 2000, which was constructed in 1998 and '99. That's primarily what we're shipping through right now, though we may bring it back in service later. As far as the operating pressure, it depends on what we're shipping down it. I don't have our maximum operating pressure available right now, but I can definitely provide that to you before the next council meeting.
These are safe and tested and.
The pipeline's been.
Physically.
Absolutely, absolutely. The pipeline's been in service since 1950, and these pipelines can last indefinitely if properly maintained. We do send what's referred to as inline inspection tools, SmartPigs, through the pipeline. They test the pipeline for corrosion, and it ships right along with whatever we're shipping through the pipeline. If we do encounter some form of corrosion, a dent, a wrinkle, if somebody takes a backhoe and nicks the pipeline and then covers it up and doesn't tell anyone about it, we can detect those during the same process. And if we do encounter some form of anomaly when we are inspecting the pipeline, we do excavate it. We get proper permits through the city to excavate the pipeline, sandblast the pipeline, get rid of any corrosion, and then recoat it with new anti-corrosion coating, which strengthens the pipeline. Usually, we can do this without. Usually, we can do this without taking the pipeline out of service at all.
Thank you. Mr. Starber?
I'm just curious, what other types of product besides crude oil is shipped in the pipe?
We only ship crude oil or other petroleum products. Sometimes we'll ship something which is partially refined. When you're taking crude from crude oil to gasoline, it goes through various phases, and sometimes we'll ship partially refined products. This pipeline ships from Kern County, and we have a series of gathering lines from the various fields in Kern County, and then it is shipped down and distributed throughout the LA basin to the various refineries, and is produced between our line 2,000 and our line 63, approximately 12% of the oil which is consumed in the refineries in the LA basin goes through either one of those two lines. We take many, many, many tanker trucks off the road by operating through a pipeline in lieu of alternative methods.
Mr. Quintero?
In the past, as we were trying to green out San Fernando Road, we had major issues with pipeline companies and the railroads, et cetera. Is this the pipeline company? No, it's a natural gas and the conduits for the...
Optical fiber.
Optical fiber and so forth, right?
Optical fiber.
That's what I thought.
Yeah. Not this pipeline.
Right.
Any other questions? And it's an ordinance for introduction?
Just a comment.
I will close the public hearing. Mr. Weaver?
You had a second line that went in about 98, you said?
There was a second line constructed. It's our line 2,000. It was constructed in 98.
I think I'm the one that issued the permit from the Corps of Engineers over the Verdugo Wash, so we scrutinized the pipe to make sure, because if it broke spanning the Verdugo Wash, we'd have an environmental disaster the whole way down. So I think it's okay.
Residents of Glendale, rest assured, that pipeline carrying crude oil has been scrutinized by our very own...
I didn't say that. Staff did.
Remember Dave Weaver. I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Weaver?
And I'll induce the ordinance at nine A one.
Was there a que... I'm sorry, before I...
That's been induced.
I have to reopen a... Let me reopen the hearing. Do we have to take action to rescind the introduction if I missed the public speaker? I do. Then we should have Mr. Weaver withdraw that.
I take back my introduction of the ordinance.
With no objection. Mr. Milano.
Thank you, Mayor Najarian, members of the city council. My name is Herbert Milano. I wanted to call your attention to a section in this particular agreement that grants the Public Works Director his discretion to renew on his own. Every five years, the renewal of this contract. That means that with this action, I should frame it as a question, does this then preclude any future city councils from reviewing these agreements on their own? Are you giving up the rights of future city councils to review these particular contracts in the future for the next 25 years? My second point that I like to ask is that when these pipelines are maintained and it's oftentimes street excavation, one of the things that I have observed often is excavation that basically have the streets repatched, but the streets never get to be reconstructed back to its original state. We wind up with a patch along the road, similar to the ones that we have now on Brand in California, barely two years after we had the whole street resurfaced, or reconstructed, I should say. So I guess I'm addressing that part to see if maybe perhaps there is any type of option that renders a street reconstruction after an excavation is done to maintain the integrity and the quality of the road. Thank you very much.
Well, that's addressed in Section 5, Paragraph C, where it says, "Upon completion of the work, all portions of the streets which have been excavated or otherwise injured thereby shall be repaired in accordance with the standards and specifications of the city and to the terms of the excavation permit." So it should be returned to our standards.
It is a requirement, that's correct.
And then it's our obligation to, of course, inspect that and issue any corrections if we don't feel that it is up to... But I guess I'm delving into your realm of Mr. Garcia and April.
Would you like a...
So two questions, I guess. One was the ratification by the Public Works Director.
Let me ask Mr. Senso to address that issue of the renewal.
And are we abrogating, waiving our right in the future to weigh in on it?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, good question. It is correct that the Director of Public Works would have the authority to grant extensions, their five-year extensions. However, should the council feel otherwise, this ordinance can be amended to bring this ordinance back, this franchise back every five years. This is a longstanding ordinance because of the fact that it's a permanent facility, and it has been longstanding. But that is within the discretion of the council.
Thank you. Mr. Starber?
We might add, if some issue arose prior to extension of a franchise by the Director of Public Works, city council could always bring the matter back and direct that the council hear the issue if they had any concerns about any of those extensions. So you're not precluded from doing that.
Just, if I may, Mr. Mayor, it's just a matter of giving the director that authority to do that, so that it doesn't have to... In the normal course of things, it won't have to come back every five years.
But should we desire to weigh in?
Should we desire to weigh in? If some issue arose, if there were some incident, and you wanted to bring it before the city council and discuss the extension, you could always do that. The council could always direct it to be brought back to the council.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards.
I'll reintroduce the ordinance.
Thank you.
Okay, one.
Thank you.
And by the way, Mr. Mayor, that line I was talking about was the new line, not the old one.
Oh. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item, please.
For mayor and council, we now return to the five-minute portion or full portion of oral communication. Discussion is limited. Item is not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision, and the city manager mayor for the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and a report.
Thank you. I have several cards this evening. First is Zoila Martinez, followed by Roberta Medford.
Good evening, sir, Mayor Glendale, and the other persons working with you. I'm sorry for my English, okay? I have a big problem for my house in November. I don't think so. You need a permit for change the windows, but I changed the windows right away that one. I received a note, I come to the city. I tried to talk to too many persons, but the persons, nobody helped me in this problem. For this, I come to you, to another person, to the council, because I need help, I need help in this problem. I can throw almost $8,000 to the garbage when I change these windows. I pray to you, I pray to God for help me.
Okay, thank you. This is a window without permits issue, and if I could put you in touch with Mr. Hagani. Ma'am, if you could give your information to Mr. Hagani. That gentleman right there raising his hand.
I don't know. I tried to call, when I went to the desk, I don't know, I don't remember what's office, the secretary, I don't want to give me the appointment for...
Okay, well, I'm glad you came. I'm glad you came forward.
Yeah.
And I did ask you to, rather than we deal with this separately, I wanted you to come forward. Thank you for doing so. This gentleman and his staff will be able to point you in the right direction to resolve the problem.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for, another council for the Glendale city.
Thank you.
Okay, when I...
Gentleman right there.
I touch you.
Standing.
Thank you. Roberta Medford, followed by Clarence Hall.
Mayor, city council, city staff, and citizens of Glendale, I was delighted... My name's Roberta Medford. I live in Montrose. I was delighted this month to see Mayor Najarian a message that you sent to my fellow Glendalean, Jim Nacella. He is a member of the Montrose Peace Vigil, and along with me and several other people at the meeting tonight, he is one of many supporters of the city of Glendale becoming a mayor for peace city. In your message, which Jim kindly shared with me, you said that you had ordered Mayors for Peace, and I quote, "to be placed on city council agenda so that we," that is you, "can pass an official resolution," unquote, doing just that. This resolution will add Glendale to California, to the now 171 U.S. cities, 4,080 worldwide, which if you've lost count, that's 600 more than the last time I was here asking for this. They range from Abashiri, Japan, to Uruvan, Armenia, and they all want to eliminate all nuclear weapons worldwide. That is all that joining Mayors for Peace has to do with. I thank you, Mayor, for taking this brave and thoughtful step. I ask that this resolution come forward as soon as possible. Next week would be good, and I look forward to all my, our representatives voting a resounding yes. Based on the overwhelmingly positive response that we at the Peace Vigil in Montrose have received these last five years, and likewise, our friends at Broadway and Brand, who have been there even longer, we know that people in Glendale support peace. I suspect that even those who find some merit in our current wars support peace. What a joy it will be to raise our eyes from the wet dust, get it, you know what wet dust turns into, of the last months, and focus our energy and passion instead on something more uplifting and worthy in the bigger picture. Not that our local concerns are not worthy and vital, of course they are. Moreover, I believe Mayors for Peace is a local concern. I believe we are all responsible for the state, and in the case of nuclear weapons, I believe the survival of the planet. I urge you to come forward with this resolution so that we can be a Mayors for Peace city. I tried to helpfully print you out the very simple registration form. It's really all it consists of, which amazingly, due to my special computer skills, came out in my handwriting. But it does have the URL up here that would make it easy to find. Please let us be a Mayor for Peace city. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll have a few comments on that at the end of oral communications.
Okay.
Clarence Hall, followed by Herbert Milano.
Mayor Najarian and members of the city council, my name is Clarence Hall. I'm a citizen of Glendale, and I'm here to petition you to issue still another proclamation, one that might require more resolve. The past city election has been a very troubling one, has it been a very troubling one. It has been traumatic for the candidates for city council, and it has left a stain on the good name of the city of Glendale. The Glendale News Press has been tainted with that stain. The paper has been guilty of yellow journalism with its eye-catching headlines to sell more newspapers. It has failed to check facts. It has printed incomplete summaries of events and statements. It has shown bias in what it has printed, and it has not printed responses to untruths or half-truths that were printed and repeated for days on its website. Historically, the fourth estate has exposed tyrants and criminal acts. It has fought for justice, what is right, what is true, and at times, it has done so at great personal cost. However, what entity exists to expose and censure the press when it abuses its powers and fails to uphold the highest standards of journalism? The corporate structure and management of the Chicago Tribune, Los Angeles Times is so complex and diffuse that the parent of the Glendale News Press is not the answer. Thus, although it is surely tilting at windmills, I ask the city council, as the elected representatives of the citizens of Glendale, to issue a proclamation that might encourage the Glendale News Press to do a better job. For your consideration, and I had some graphics, but I can't show those, for your consideration, I'm providing a draft of such a proclamation, one that you would, that with your knowledge and expertise can be improved upon, and to which would be added the necessary artistic flourishes and seals. I'll leave this with a clerk. The draft that I'm suggesting is "City of Glendale, California, Concerning a Proclamation Setting forth the City's Expectations of the Glendale News Press. Whereas excellence in journalism is expected by all of the citizens of Glendale, and whereas the Glendale News Press, as a member of the fourth estate, holds a sacred trust to accurately and completely report its printed word, and whereas the Glendale News Press, recognizing its power of the pen, must adhere to a strict policy of fairness to all. I, Aron Najarian, Mayor of the city of Glendale, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim this day and all future dates to be Glendale News Press's commitment to excellent days, and I hereby encourage all Glendaleans to continue to recognize, support, and hold the Glendale News Press to the highest standards of ethics and journalism." My name is Clarence Hall, and my hope is that the Glendale News Press can regain the respect and the trust that it once had. Thank you.
Thank you. Herbert Milano, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Thank you, Mayor Najarian, members of the city council and city staff. My name is Herbert Milano. This year, this month marks an anniversary that has impacted the finances of the city in a very severe and damaging way. Ten years ago, barely two weeks after the election of Bob Josephian and Frank Quintero, and the reelection of David Weaver, the city council passed a change with a particular resolution to modify the pension system that had been extended up to that point. It was a resolution to change the pension system to police officers and firefighters. That pension change has created such a burden that Glendale and other municipalities that copied it are now unable to balance their budgets without cutting services or capital improvements or both. That pension allows a retired employee as early as age 50 to receive up to 90% of their last highest pay, adjusted for inflation, for the rest of their life. The April 2001 ordinance allowed all safety employees hired since 1971 to receive a retroactive benefit that changed the rules under which they were hired. This change is on top of a 1991 change on MOUs that increases the pay of safety personnel to an amount equivalent to their share of their pension contribution. I have a couple of PDFs, if I may show them to you, that demonstrate the type of impact that it has had on the city's finances. As a way, I'd like to present to you some of the long-term obligations, accrued pensions and pension payments. Next slide. You've seen this slide before. This is an accrued pension liability that is supported by assets of Calpers and the contributions of the city and the city employees. If those assets fail or drop in value, you're on the hook for that very larger amount up there, 1.3 billion. Next slide. These are numbers from the 1990s and the early, and the last few years with regard to depicting the growth of that pension obligation as payments. Next slide. This bar chart basically demonstrates those five particular years, 1995, 2000, 2005, 2010, and expected for 2015. Actually, I only have 2014, but I applied it to 2015. That information comes from the comprehensive annual reports and budgets that come from the, that you can find easily at the Glendale library in the reference section. It also is information that I obtained from the California Public Records Act requests, and it's information that comes here from this document, which is the Glendale Firefighter Association MOU. It also comes from information of the Public Records Ag... Records Act request, information submitted by the city. It comes from information and agenda items that I have here with me of the actual resolutions presented by the City My contention is that we need significant pension reform. It cannot simply be limited to future hires. The rationale for the pension change that was justified on a valuation by CalPERS assets in the stock market bubble of 1999. So by the time that you approved this particular resolution, that bubble had already bursted. The bubble had popped, and the pension change was based on a fantasy. The valuation was given by CalPERS that you would pay nothing, but of course, we now know that we wound up paying a significant amount for that particular change. There is plenty of justification for making true and real pension reform that is significant, meaningful, and in my opinion, it should be the keystone for this year's budget studies and discussions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Margaret Hammond, followed by Charles Hooker.
Good evening, Mayor Najarian, members of the council, staff, and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond. I am here for a couple of reasons tonight. Number one being the bulky item pickup. I still don't understand why items are left for two weeks at a time when city employees pick up trash weekly, and why those employees are not calling in when those bulky items are left there. My, the answer to me is being, well, you call. Well, why should I call for the whole city? I call for my own section of the city and waste my time because you have to go through all this silly nonsense that they spew at you over the phone, listen while you're waiting for them to answer your call. So I do feel, get people to phone themselves, and that phone number is 818-548-3916. And one of the reasons that I am saying this number, and I will be saying it every week, is that I understand, I, there has been a rumor, which I hope is wrong, that the City Views is going to be discontinued, the newspaper, the Glendale City Newspaper. One of the reasons being, of course, that the City Council is not entitled or allowed to advertise or use it in any way for their own purpose, so they're going to just possibly do away with it. And I do want to bring up something in regards to the landscaping on San Fernando Road. After all the beefing and the raving and the ranting that everybody did, I drove down the other day, and it suddenly, I hadn't been out for a while, or on that street, how beautiful it looks. It really looks great. Did a beautiful job of the landscaping with what could be done there because of the problem with it being along the railroad tracks. And one of the best things of all is there are no billboards on that whole area, all the way from the border of Burbank down to the border of Los Angeles. And that was thanks to the City Council having the foresight to buy up or do away with whatever the deals were with those billboards. And it sure makes a big difference. It really does. It, it, the street looks great and lives up to its El Camino Real. And I hope that we are going to be able to keep that ordinance in place for no billboards in the city. The other thing is, I would like to know, I keep waiting anxiously for the River Walk, along the river, shall we say, whatever you call it over there, to be finished or completed or what's going on. Haven't really heard anything about it lately, and hoping it's going to be pretty soon that it will be finished. It's been several years in the works, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Margaret. Charles Hooker, followed by Sharon Weisman.
My name is Charles Hooker, Mayor, City Council. What I'd like to know is, why do we need any more houses or condominiums or anything built in Glendale? We already have enough apartments, condominiums, houses that are vacant. To build more up in our hills, especially up in the Montrose area, which is a small little community, I live on the border, Montrose, Glendale, and we already have one big eyesore up there now. And now we have the, of course, the liquor barn up there, up by Fred Hodder Ford, and we don't need a bunch of more, throughout the city, we don't need anything. And we have enough loafers laying around Glendale, and through our shopping centers, racing around in their BMWs and their Mercedes. Well, we don't need to draw any more undesirable people into Glendale. Water problems, we never know when we're going to have enough water, electricity. All I can say is, please, if you want to tear up Glendale, go at it. But leave Montrose and our little surrounding area around there, please leave it alone. And as far as the Glendale News Press, I'd like to say thank you to the Glendale News Press for still trying to run an honest story and trying to keep the people in Glendale informed. I guess a lot of people, or some people, don't like the paper, but it's one that's, I guess it's free to all the people, and I guess that's kind of what hurts the, some of the people here in this dais. Thank you very much.
Sharon Weisman.
Mayor Najarian, council members and staff, I'm Sharon Weisman from far north Glendale, and I'm speaking as an individual. This is the 150th anniversary of the start of the U.S. Civil War, the beginning of a very sad episode in the history of our country with brother fighting brother. It's also the anniversary of Yuri Gagarin's historic first human journey into outer space 100 years later. That positive scientific feat is one of the few good results of the Cold War between the Communist Soviet Union and the capitalist nations led by the United States. I think it's fitting that today is also a global day of action on military spending. In 2009, global military spending was 1.53 trillion dollars, an all-time high at the time. According to the Stockholm International Peace Research Institute, 46.5% of that spending was by our nation. The next largest world spender on weaponry is China, at a mere 6.6%. Our spending continues to increase for our wars of occupation in Afghanistan and Iraq, as well as to support the other over 1.5 million Americans currently deployed around the world. Among them are green card soldiers who hope to become American citizens. During the past few years, I volunteered with the Glendale Library's Adult Literacy Program, doing one-on-one tutoring with a citizen who was born in India, and now that her children are grown, wants to improve her English. As professional library staff retire, and in one sad case, are lost to cancer, they have not been replaced. The literacy office continues to support all of us volunteer tutors with one full-time staffer and AmeriCorps volunteers, workers. In other words, while military spending increases, funding for vital services needed here in Glendale shrinks. I suspect those listening know of many other examples of things being neglected in our city due to lack of adequate funding. We've all watched the council make difficult decisions on how to best allocate dwindling revenue and cover increased costs. There is no longer need to have tens of thousands of U.S. troops in Germany or South Korea. They couldn't afford their own defense. While combat troops are supposed to be out of Iraq, Americans continue to die there. We should complete the withdrawal there now, and we must also formulate and execute a rapid exit strategy for Afghanistan. Reducing the number of young Americans in the armed services will exacerbate the unemployment problems, so we must simultaneously take steps to create jobs. The years of neglect in our infrastructure provides many opportunities. I suggest expansion of AmeriCorps to provide jobs for returning veterans and other young Americans. Young undocumented residents known as Dreamers, those who would have been eligible to apply for citizenship under the Dream Act because of being brought into this country as minor children, plus their completion of either two years of college or military service, are in the news lately for coming out and demanding citizenship in exchange for their contributions to our society, current and especially in the future. I think we should revive the Dream Act and include a third option, public service in the Peace Corps or AmeriCorps or similar programs. There are many peaceful ways to serve one's country. Please research how the New Deal helped America recover from the Great Depression, and consider how a new New Deal, including these suggestions, might play a similar role in today's recovery from the Great Recession. If you agree, please contact Senators Boxer and Feinstein and Congressmember Schiff, and urge them to lead efforts to reduce U.S. military presence worldwide, redirect the savings into infrastructure maintenance and public service job programs, and revive the Dream Act with a third option for public service. That will help Glendale, the United States, and the world. And a couple additional things. I concur with a speaker that mentioned the news press needs to improve their reporting and fairness, and I'm glad to hear Starship Montrose is being occupied, and some things happening there in that, that building. And lastly, I hope the Armenian genocide commemoration event will be recorded and made available on the city's website, because there's a number of other events on that Monday. The Transportation and Parking Commission meeting, and the North Glendale Community Plan Advisory Committee meets that same Monday. So we hope to be able to, to see the event, you know, at our own convenience. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you. I don't have any other cards. Let me just start with a few comments to Roberta Medford. I, I did go to your, to the website, and it does involve a resolution by the legislative body, and, meaning the City Council. It's not just Mayor Najarian clicks and we're on. And I think we have discussed that with Mr. Tikta, and that will be coming before us shortly. I think in all the rush with the elections and all this other stuff, we may have neglected to bring it forward as quickly as we could have, but that certainly will be, will be coming up shortly. With regard to Margaret, a couple items. I have good news in that this, this coming week, actually, a week from today, Mr. Starbird and I will be meeting with representatives of Billboard Company to continue our efforts to remove billboards from the city. Mr. Starbird knew about that, but that's exactly what we're going to be doing to entering into that discussion. It will then be brought, of course, acted on by the City Council, but we're going to at least be talking about how we can reduce billboards. And with regard to the River Walk, we're going to have a groundbreaking ceremony this Thursday at 12:00 noon, and the exact location, I don't want to steer you wrong, Margaret, so perhaps our, I'm sure someone from our office can tell you exactly where that's going to take place. I know, obviously, it's going to be along the river. It is, Mr. Weaver designed a river, not a flood control channel.
It's at the corner of Paula and Garden Street, and it's from noon to 1:30.
All that, we are moving forward on that as well. Other comments?
Well, yeah, I guess, yeah, I guess I have one as a native of Montrose area. Are we getting a liquor barn? I don't know anything about that. I know that there's a Trader Joe's underway, but I don't know anything about liquor barn, and...
They sell.
Pardon me?
Well, they sell.
Lots of things, produce.
Trader Joe's or a liquor barn?
The liquor barn.
Oh, I presume.
That's a new one on me.
Same here.
Was curious about that.
Don't know where that came from.
That was it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Is there another comments?
We adjourn.
On your business?
We adjourn.
Your second?
We adjourn.